All right, thank you all and thank you for participating in this yet another Zoom session of the Florence City Council. I call this meeting to order. Councilwoman Irvin, if you'll give us the invocation, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. Dear gracious Creator, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the precious sunshine. We ask that you would come into this meeting, that you would be with each of us to regardless to where we're at in this present time. We ask you to lead us with your wisdom, with your knowledge and your foresight, that the decisions that we make on behalf of this great city would be for the betterment of now and the future. So we welcome you and we ask also that you promote healing over this land wherever healing is needed. We honor you, we respect you and we accept your will. Amen.
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 A pledge allegiance to the republic.
Just the flag.
I say.
The republic, the republic, the republic, one nation, God, and the freedom, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Irvin. You all have in your package the meetings from the July 13th, 2020. Right, what do you read in your motion?
So move it.
The motion by Councilwoman Irvin, second, I thought I heard from Councilman Willis. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Minutes passed unanimously. You all also have in your packet several addenda to the agenda, and I'm going to ask the council to vote to add these to the agenda. They are, and I'll ask for a vote in one vote. I think we can do that, Jim.
Yes.
Resolution 2020-17, 2020-18, 2020-19, and executive sessions pursuant to 30-40-70A5 relating to economic development. Is there a motion to add those matters to the?
So move.
Motion by Councilwoman Irvin, second by Councilwoman Moore. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. It's appearing that the motion is passing unanimously. It meets to require two-thirds vote. The matters will be added to the agenda in the appropriate order. Next matter then for our consideration is public hearing on the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant regarding a request for law enforcement equipment. And with that, we will recognize the chief. Chief, how?
Mayor, council, as we do every year, the police department is seeking a equipment grant through the Department of Justice in the amount of $29,121. And this is a carbon copy from last year. We're seeking locking equipment boxes for the new vehicles that will be purchased in this fiscal year budget. And this is the public hearing requirement for the award of that grant.
Very well. Given that then, I declare the public hearing open. We have obviously advertised this meeting and access to the meeting via Zoom. I'm not aware, Madam Clark, of anyone having asked me to speak on this subject. Very well, is there any comment or discussion from council? Very well, hearing none. Chief, is there any action required of us?
Not.
Very well, thank you for that, chief. Next matters for our consideration are ordinances in position. These begin with bill number 2020-17, ordinance revising the water and sewer rate schedule. The city, South Carolina, is air motion.
So move.
As a motion by Councilwoman Williams Blake, is there a second? Hello? I'll second the motion. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Measure passes unanimously. Next bill for our consideration is 2020-18. An ordinance require to amend Chapter 12, Article 3, Section 12-130 of the code to allow for protection of water meters from unlawful damage, tampering, or improper care. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion by Councilman Willis. Is there a second?
Second, Brandon.
Second, Councilwoman Brandon. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Measure passes unanimously. Next, bill number 2020-21, a second reading on ordinance to amend the budget for the city for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, ending June 30th, 2021. Members will recall, this amendment is in accord with the various borrowings that are contained in the second reading of ordinance is 2020-22, 23, and 24. Passed first reading unanimously. Is there a motion?
So move.
Move.
As a, I heard Councilman Brandon, I saw Councilwoman Irvin's hand, so that's a motion by Brandon, the second by Councilwoman Irvin. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Measure passes unanimously. Next matter for our consideration is bill number 2020-22. Again, this 2020-22, 23, and 24 relate to the borrowings that we discussed at last meeting. 2020 is the IPRB bonds. Is there a motion on 2020-22?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Willis. I'll take it as a second by Councilwoman Moore. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Protim?
What, excuse this, we've already answered this one time. And just as a reference, what kind of interest rate are we looking at on these?
Yes, Mr. Yocum, remind us again. I remember it was an attractive one, buddy, but I don't remember the exact number. Mr. Yocum, what's the interest rate we expect?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, we expect somewhere between 2% and 2.5%. This issue, the rates we'll get will be received toward the end of this month.
2% and 2.5%, buddy. Don't make a lot of money selling bonds at 2% and 2.5%, man.
No, but I'd like to have some.
Very well.
2.5%, yeah, okay.
Absolutely. Very attractive interest rate. Thank you for that, Mr. Yocum. There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Very well, motion passes unanimously. And again, thank you to staff, particularly Mr. Yocum, for their attentiveness to this. Those are very attractive rates and you can save the taxpayer quite a bit of money. Next is bill number 2020-23 for a second reading. Of course, this is the sale of GO bonds in accord with these other borrowings that we've previously discussed. Is there a motion?
So move.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Irvin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Williams Blake, as well as Councilman Willis. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Measure passes unanimously. Next, bill number 2020-24 for a second reading. Of course, provide the sale again of GO bond refunding. This is refinancing of existing general obligation debt to obtain the benefit of those lower interest rates. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion by Councilwoman Irvin. I think I saw a second by Councilwoman Moore. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Measure passes unanimously. Next matter for our consideration then is bill 220-25 for a second reading. This is an ordinance authorizing the conditional grant and development agreement with the developer team regarding downtown real estate and authorizing the conveyance of real estate located in the city. And this is all detailed in Exhibit A to the attached ordinance. You all recall, this involved property to be redeveloped on Evans Street and generating a significant number of jobs, quite a bit of investment. Passed from first reading unanimously. Is there a motion on second read?
So move.
Motion by Councilwoman Willis, second by Councilwoman Irvin. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Measure passes unanimously. Next matter for our consideration is introduction of ordinance. There's only one ordinance before us on first reading, that is bill 2020-27. This is an ordinance to execute a lease agreement to lease the upstairs office suite and downstairs conference room of a building owned by the city located at 152 South McQueen Street. Fortunately, taxes. I'm sorry, there's a motion?
Second.
Okay, so motion, I think it's a motion by Councilwoman Moore and a second by Councilman Willis. Am I correct about that?
Correct.
Yes.
Excellent. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, is that Hank Porter's, Mr. Mayor?
It is. It is, Mr. Protim. And for those of y'all at home, this is a property that was formerly the office of former mayor and now Judge Hank Porter. That property is adjacent to the property that the city purchased here at the city center, became available, and we purchased that to help fill out that block. That property has been either vacant or mostly vacant since Judge Porter elevated to the bench. And a lawyer in town, Mr. Steve Calcutt, has offered, requested to lease that property at market rate rent. Of course, because it is a lease and a conveyance of some interest in the rights to this property, it requires two readings by this council. And so you're quite right, Mr. Protim, that is Judge Porter's former building, now owned by the city, seeking to be rented by Mr. Calcutt.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Measure passes unanimously. Always nice to make useful rents out of a building that we own and was previously vacant. Next matter for our consideration are reports to council, first being appointments to boards and commissions. Bear with me while I pull this up. The first appointment is to the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. That appointment falls to Councilman Brandon. Councilman Brandon?
Yes, I would defer. Do we have anyone that would like to be appointed to that, Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Davis, can you help us on this? Well, Mr. Protim, I understand that Mr. Chad Patterson is seeking reappointment, Mr. Davis?
Yeah. That'd be, yeah, that would be fine.
Very well, the Protim moves to reappoint Mr. Chad Patterson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Willis. Any discussion? Any objection? Very well, without objection, Mr. Patterson is reappointed to the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Thank you, Mr. Protim. Next appointment is falls to Councilman Jubilee, being an appointment to the Florence Planning Commission. Councilman?
By understanding that current members of the planning commission are requesting to be reappointed, and Ms. Dorothy Hines has requested to be reappointed, and so I will nominate Ms. Dorothy Hines for reappointment.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Very well, Ms. Hines will continue to serve then on the planning commission. Councilwoman Williams Blake, you also have an appointment to the planning commission.
I will reappoint Mr. Robbie Hill.
Very well. Appointment is of Mr. Hill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the reappointment, Mr. Hill. Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Mr. Hill is reappointed. Next is the Florence Board of Zoning Appeals. This appointment falls to Councilman Willis. Councilman Willis?
Mr. Randolph Hunter would like to be reappointed, and I'd like to so do so.
Very well, Mr. Willis reappoints Mr. Hunter. Is there a second?
Second.
Very well, there's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Mr. Hunter's reappointed. Next appointment to the Florence Board of Zoning Appeals falls to me. I understand that Mr. Ruben Chico also seeks reappointment to that committee, and I would move his reappointment. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, it's been second by Councilwoman Moore and multiple others, I think Councilman Willis and others. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Very well, both Mr. Hunter and Mr. Chico then will continue to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals. It appears there is actually a third seat on the Board of Zoning Appeals falls to Councilwoman Irvin.
Yes, I see that. We have new applicant, Ms. Hees.
Second.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you very well, Councilwoman Irvin. I know, I think Octavia heard you, but I didn't. What, your appointment is as to whom?
Jelanda Dees.
Jelanda Dees. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Dees to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Very well, Mr. Dees, Ms. Dees will also serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Next appointment is to the Civic Center Commission, and that appointment falls to Councilwoman Moore. Councilwoman Moore?
Um, I'd like to appoint Annie K. Scott.
All right, Ms. Scott is a motion to approve. Ms. Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Very well, Ms. Scott will serve on the Civic Center Commission. Next appointment falls to the Protim. Councilman Brandon, what do you say?
I'm going to defer.
Very well, Councilman Brandon defers his motion appointment to the Civic Center Commission. Next is Councilman Jubilee. Councilman Jubilee?
My understanding that Keith Buckhouse is requesting to be reappointed, is that correct?
That is correct, Councilman.
Then I will move to reappoint Keith Buckhouse.
Very well. Motion and second to appoint Mr. Buckhouse to the Civic Center Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Mr. Buckhouse will continue to serve on the Civic Center Commission. Next appointment is to the Florence Design Review Board, and this appointment falls to Councilwoman Williams Blake. Councilwoman Williams Blake, what's your pleasure?
So this is a board that requires specific specialties, and so for the professional architect, I'd like to nominate or renominate Scott Collins.
Thank you.
Very well. There's been a motion by Councilwoman Williams Blake, second by Councilwoman Irvin, to renominate Mr. Collins to the Design Review Board. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Very well, Mr. Collins is reappointed. Staff, be attentive to Mr. Collins' address. Apparently, he's asking that we note that. Next appointment to the Design Review Board falls to Councilman Willis. Councilman Willis, what say you?
Mayor, I'd like to reappoint Mr. David Tetter.
Very well, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Irvin. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the reappointment, Mr. Tetter to the Design Review Board. Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Very well, Mr. Tetter is reappointed to the Design Review Board. Next appointment falls to me for the Design Review Board, and fortunately, we lack an applicant, it appears, so I'll defer that. And of course, staff and council members will remind folks in the public to please, if you're interested in serving on the Design Review Board, make your application to the city here at the city center, and we'd be happy to consider those applications. Then next appointment is also apparently to the Design Review Board as well. Councilwoman Irvin, and I think you face the same obstacle that I do with regard to your appointment, Councilwoman. What do you say?
I defer to have an applicant.
Very well, thank you. Both those seats on the Design Review Board are deferred, seeking applications. Next appointment is to the Housing Authority Board, and it falls to Councilwoman Moore. Councilwoman Moore?
I'd like to reappoint Douglas Hawkins.
Very well. There's a motion to reappoint Mr. Hawkins to the Housing Authority Board, second by Councilwoman Williams Blake. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. Very well, Mr. Hawkins will continue to serve on the Housing Authority Board. Next is the Stadium Commission. Appointment falls to Councilman Brandon. Mr. Protim, what say you?
Mayor, do we have any applications for that?
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Davis?
Chapel Jones.
Chapel Jones?
Yes, I would move to reappoint him to be so inclined to be reappointed, please.
Very well, and Mr. Davis Jones has sought reappointment. Very well. Protim reappoints. Is there a second?
Second.
Very well, it's second by Councilwoman Irvin, Councilman Willis and others. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Very well, the reappointment is unanimous. Next is the Beautification Commission. That appointment falls to Councilman Jubilee. Councilman Jubilee?
My understanding that Ms. Thomasina Foster has requested to be reappointed, and I'd move to reappoint her.
Second.
Very well, there's a motion by Councilman Jubilee to reappoint Ms. Foster, second by Councilwoman Irvin. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Ms. Foster's reappointed. Thank you, Councilman. Next appointment to the Beautification Commission is Councilwoman Williams Blake. Councilwoman?
I'd like to reappoint Philip Scott Murphy.
Second.
There's been a motion to reappoint Philip Scott Murphy, second by Councilwoman Irvin. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Measure passes unanimously. Next is the Airport Authority, with the appointment falling to Councilman Willis.
Mr. Mayor, I understand Mr. Kirsten Nemec would like to be reappointed. I'd like to do so.
Very well, there's been a motion to reappoint Ms. Nemec. I knew, I heard a second. I'm not sure which one.
Second.
By Councilwoman Irvin and Councilman Jubilee, appears. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Very well, Ms. Nemec is reappointed. And I believe, there's one last appointment falls to me, the Veterans Park Committee. I understand that Ms. Carter seeks reappointment, and I would move their reappointment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Irvin. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Very well, the reappointment is made unanimously, and thank you all for wading through these appointments to boards and commissions while it's difficult to do it via Zoom. Next matter then for our consideration is Resolution 2020-17. Actually, both 2020-17 and 2020-18 are discussions of negotiations incident to measure length to proposed economic development pursuant to South Carolina Code 30-4-70A5. Therefore, we need to.
Mayor?
Executive session. Councilman?
Point of order question. Have the 2020-27 for first reading dealing with the undeveloped portion of public right of way on 622 and 700 Greenway, is that still before us for first reading?
Councilman, staff's telling me that matter has been removed from the agenda, has been deferred to next month.
Thank you.
Very well. Thank you for that point, Board. That may have appeared on a previous draft agenda. Is that right, staff? Yeah. So that, you're correct, Councilman. I believe that's a matter that appeared on a previous draft agenda but was removed prior to the formal agenda and will be taken up at the next meeting.
No problems, just clarification.
Thank you, sir. Matter before us is the motion to retire to executive session. Oh, I'm sorry.
2020-19.
All right, okay, very well. Well, prior to taking up 2020-17 and 2020-18 after executive session, city manager asked that we address our attention to Resolution 2020-19, which is the resolution pursuant to Section 3 ordinance 2020-13 to extend the emergency term and application of the emergency ordinance.
I so move.
Second.
There's motions by, motion by Councilwoman Moore, second by Councilman Jubilee, and second by Councilwoman Irvin. None of us enjoyed this Zoom interaction, folks. Not to say we don't enjoy our interaction with one another, but we much prefer being in each other's presence and in the presence of the constituency, but unfortunately, for the time being, it looks like we don't have much choice. There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Very well, Resolution 2020-19 passes unanimously, and the ordinance will be extended additional 60 days. That takes us to the matters of economic development to be taken up in executive session, 2020-17 and 2020-18. Is there any objection to retiring to executive session? Hearing no objection, we will retire to executive session.
Relax.
We have returned from executive session. We discussed a variety of matters, all of which either related to proposed economic development matters or proposed contractual relations and arrangements between virtue of 30-4-70A2 and A5 of the South Carolina Code. Let's begin with the Save-A-Lot project. One of the matters of discussion in executive session was the Save-A-Lot project. If you all recall, many months ago, this council became involved with a economic development project involving the Housing Authority and the Save-A-Lot grocery chain. The Housing Authority proposed to construct a grocery store on North Dargan Street on property that was owned by the city. The city agreed to convey certain portions of that property to the Housing Authority for that purpose and to provide parking on city-owned property around that location. We got underway, and unfortunately, during the process, the contractor who was retained by the Housing Authority failed to execute on the contract. After having undertaken the contract and done some work, they ultimately now have defaulted on that contract. The Housing Authority and the city then have been very much desirous of moving that contract forward, and this council has particularly felt the urgency of that need. And to that end, the Housing Authority has agreed to provide some supplemental funds towards retaining a new contractor. The city proposes that we operate now as the project manager, which we had not in the past, and that we retain FBI construction, who had not been involved in the past, to try to bring this contract to fruition. That also will involve the city undertaking additional expense along with the Housing Authority and retaining a lien on the property to protect that additional investment as well as our original investment. Given all that, we very much would like to move this forward quickly. I, for one, have confidence that though I do not relish this additional expense, nor do any of the rest of us, I'm very confident that with the city managing the project and FBI doing the work, that we'll be able to move this forward quickly. And I also have likewise confidence that once constructed this grocery store, which is much needed, will be successful. Given that, is there a motion that we authorize staff adhering to this?
So move.
I'm sorry. There's a motion by Councilwoman Williams, second by Councilwoman Irvin, another second by Councilwoman Moore. And of course, the motion was to authorize the staff to execute the arrangements as we discussed in executive session. Is that sufficient for your purposes, Mr. Peterson? Very well. There's been a motion and several seconds. Any discussions? Hearing none.
Mr. Mayor, one discussion point, Councilman Brandon. You recognized it twice, but I think it's very apparent that FBI is coming in, and we have a quality construction company finishing this job out, and that should prove to be at. finishing this job out, and that should prove to be a very, a very good thing for our citizens, that it's going to be done correctly, on time, and within the money we set, very good builder.
Quite right, Mayor, Pro Tem, we can't say that enough, you know, that unfortunately, this contractor that was engaged by the Housing Authority failed to execute on this contract, but we are all very confident, the FBI, which of course hadn't been involved in this contract before, but has done many, many projects in this community, including many projects for the city of Florence, will come in and save the day, as it were, performing as they always have, with great product and with great timeliness, and with great attention to the budget. So I think that's quite right, Mr. Pro Tem, and we look forward to FBI working on this project. Councilman Irvin?
And I also do want to acknowledge that it is a needed project. We need to remember that the location where it's located and presently being built has been identified as a food desert, which means that when you come to the northern and eastern part of the city, there are no major grocery stores. So not only will we have the city managing this property, or this development, which is excellent, we will have a reliable builder, but also, we will be meeting the needs of the community as we are growing Florence, to make sure that we create, one, this drop city. We need economic development, we need economic development to occur north of Evans Street now, so we do need that project in order to have a healthy food store located on the northern part of our development.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and I know that's a, that is a feeling that's shared by all the members of council, and which should be particularly apparent, given council's commitment to moving forward in this project and funding additional costs, irrespective of the fact that we've run into some obstacles that were not particularly foreseeable.
Right.
Thank you for that, and thank you for, members, for your discussion. Given that, there's a motion pending, but it's been moved and seconded, is all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign? Very well, measure passes unanimously. Mr. Moore, we look forward to construction. Very well, now, next matter for our consideration is another matter we discussed in executive session, that is an amendment to Project Urban Square. You all will recall that Project Urban Square was highly anticipated, and it looks to be around a $60 million investment on the property that contains the former Florentine Building that we've now demolished, that there on the corner of Coit and Evans Street, and that entire block. There, you all also recall that we entered into a conditional grant with developer for that site. That site caused for a number of things, and I think that what we have here is an amendment to that conditional grant that is beneficial and attractive to everybody involved. First thing that site called for was the city's construction of parking deck. As you know, the city in that initial conditional grant committed to providing 400 parking spaces for the development on that site, and certainly, we think that that's an appropriate number of spaces for that development, and it will be needed there. However, the city is desirous of reducing the number of those spaces that are provided via a parking deck, and that is because the parking deck is the most expensive method by which you can provide parking. We are all familiar with the fact that one parking space in a parking deck can cost upwards of $25,000, and so if we can reduce the number of spaces we provide through the deck while still providing them by alternate means, we can save the city and the taxpayers significant amounts of money. That requires, of course, cooperation of the developer to agree to that change, however, the developer's been easy to work with in this regard, and has allowed us to agree to reduce the number of spaces that will be provided through the deck, and we anticipate probably saving about 100 spaces in the deck, which of course could translate into 2 and a half million dollars worth of savings. We supplement then those parking deck spaces with surface parking, we've been able to identify and purchase the parcels associated with that to provide surface parking, and so that is one source of savings that by agreement with the developer through the new site plan will be beneficial. Next element for discussion is that, of course, one of the things in the litany of calendar of things that had to be done under that conditional grant was the identification and agreement of a site plan, which would include the location and size of that parking deck, and I think we've reached that point, and so we can check off that, that element of the list in this conditional grant agreement, we've now reached agreement on the site plan, and then, then that then, of course, calls for the conveyance of property, which will be done in short order. Another thing that this amendment calls for, which is the augmentation of the grant to the developer, partly possible because of the savings and the cost of the parking deck, to an additional amount of approximately $141,000 a year for three years, which is far less than the savings we gained as a result of the amendments to the parking deck, and it also speaks to the speed with which this project now is moving forward. The next step that has been taken by the developer that was called for in March of 2021 was the identification of a hotelier for that site, they have now identified the hotelier, and so they are ahead on that, on that point as well. So we are now at the point where we have agreed to the site plan, identified the hotelier, we can augment the grant with significant cost savings from the deck, and then move forward with the conveyance, and of course, that amendment and those actions, which were discussed in executive session, are those that the, that I and the staff seek council's approval of here today. You have before you to that end Resolution 2020-17 authorizing those actions. Having said all that, is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Motion by Councilwoman Irvin, second by Councilwoman Moore. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign? And we look forward then to the continued movement then on Project Urban Square, and thank staff for their hard work and for accelerating this project forward. Last matter for our consideration that was discussed in executive session is a proposed economic development plant, this proposed economic development issue is a grant for the development of property located at 236 West Evans. Is there a motion that we make that grant?
So move.
Motion by Councilwoman Irvin, second by Councilwoman Moore, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign? That grant then is adopted unanimously. The city manager, I think that concludes all the matters that were required attention from executive session, and with that, if I'm not mistaken, I think we've concluded the badges on this agenda. Very well, thank you, members, unless there's anything further, is there a motion, adjourn?
I move.
Without objection, we stand adjourned.